And thank you to everybody here, including the media and COGICO, for making a special trip out here for this special meeting specifically to deal with the VTS, or as it's better known, the people mover system. First up, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest from council? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to our first and only report, and I'd ask our CIO, or in this case here, our Director of Economic Development, Serge Filicetti, if you'd please lead us through the PowerPoint.
Thank you, Your Worship. As council is aware, the city has played the role of a facilitator as we've moved this project forward, and through that process, we've been able to secure $50 million that would go toward the capital cost of this system. And hopefully after tonight's meeting, we'll be able to start spending that money and move forward to implement the system. And as we move forward with the project, we've kept, obviously, key objectives of why we've entered and moved forward with the VTS system in mind, and that is to develop a safe, accessible, convenient, comfortable system that meets the needs of the visitor. You know, to provide an efficient and environmentally responsible service. Now, the rolling stock provider that we've selected, the rolling stock actually will run on clean diesel and has also the capability of biodiesel, so great in terms of the carbon footprint. Also, as council is aware, over the last decade, the private sector, the federal and provincial government has invested hundreds of millions of dollars in the destination. Gaming facilities, the convention center, hotel, attraction development, go train service, weekend service that we have now, and hopefully we'll have permanent service. And this system will be that thread that links all of these, all of this infrastructure together, and will also enhance that visitor experience, and so making it convenient for them to visit these various attractions, and hopefully extend length of stay, and that's one of the key objectives. Also, in terms of an environmental perspective, getting people to park their cars, use the system to get around and see the community and the attractions, and also enhance further economic activity. And hopefully down the road, once this is established, there's the possibility to enhance the system, potentially with different types of technology, and expand it to service new areas and attractions. So those are the objectives we've kept in mind as we move this initiative forward. Now, we're just going to provide highlights of the agreement between the city and the Niagara Parks. It will be a 10-year term in terms of the agreement. There will be an opportunity to renew and extend that. The city will operate and maintain the red and blue lines, and the parks will operate the green line, and the map illustrates the alignments for council. Now, in terms of the system itself, there'll be two sets of retail tickets to launch the system. The first will be a retail ticket that's sold for $10 per person. It'll be good for two consecutive days, and there'll be no transfer costs between the lines. These tickets will be available through ticket kiosks, they're automated kiosks, and there'll be 10 distributed along the lines. And there also is the potential to add additional locations, such as storefronts, as we move forward as well. There'll be four kiosks along the green line, six kiosks along the red and blue line. Now, we haven't determined the ones along the red and blue line, we're going to work with the BIAs and determine that as well. And there'll be, one of those six will be at the Via Go station on Bridge Street. The other set of tickets is discounted tickets, which will be made available to BIA members at a price of $250 per person, good for two consecutive days on the system. Now, the ticket must be packaged or bundled with a product or service with a minimum value of $40. So accommodations, whether it's attraction package, it's up to the industry, but it has to be packaged. Again, transfer between the lines are at no additional cost to the passenger. Now, in terms of revenue, the NPC will contribute $1 million annually towards the city's operation of the red and blue line. That million will increase by 2.5% annually during the term of the agreement. One clause in the agreement, if there's any disruption of scheduled service of three days or longer on the red and blue line, our line, NPC will be credited those days, and that equates to about $2,700. It was a simple formula we used, it was $1 million divided by 365 days. Also, NPC will retain all revenues from the retail, walk-on, and BIA VTS discounted tickets until they reach their first million. After that, the NPC and the city will share that revenue 50/50. Now, the Via and Go train station's a little different. The city will share that revenue 50/50 with the parks, less the cost to operate the Queen Street route. So we will get those dollars back first before we share. And the next slide will just show you the alignment in yellow along the blue line that we will use to identify that cost. So it's going from Clifton Hill, River Road, Chrysler, heading back east on Bridge to River Road, so that's the area. Also, as part of the agreement, the city will own all the buses, and we will lease for a dollar per vehicle to the Niagara Parks, nine articulated buses and two standard units. They'll be fully equipped with the intelligent transportation system we've described in earlier reports. The NPC will also need to provide appropriate insurance that is acceptable to the city under the term as well. Now, the bus lease itself, there are some termination clauses. One could be if either party becomes bankrupt or insolvent. The other is if the parks wishes within that 10-year period, before it's over, to purchase those 11 vehicles, they can do so. However, if it initiates a clawback by the federal and provincial governments, they will have to make the city whole. That's part of the agreement. And it doesn't release the NPC from the actual overall agreement. So if they were actually to buy the buses and not use them, get another form of rolling stock, they would have to be branded the same, and they'd have to adhere to the agreement in terms of the VTS operations. There's also a license for a storage facility as part of the capital allocation. We will be looking to build an operations, maintenance, and storage facility. They will have up to eight spaces. Now, if the capital budget doesn't allow us to fully build out storage, it'll be based on a prorata basis. For instance, if we can only accommodate 10 stalls for the VTS buses, they would get 40% of that, or four stalls, we would have six. Space is leased at a dollar per bay, and they will also pay for overhead costs. Also, NPC can terminate the lease of space during the term of the agreement. And there's also insurance provisions that they would have to accommodate as well in terms of the storage facility. Now, we do have a review of the system. Between the first, after the first, and before the fifth anniversary of the startup date, the city and NPC can and could conduct an audit of the VTS system. Now, we have to mutually agree on when we're going to do that audit, and we've also agreed that we will share the cost of the audit going forward. In addition, if, you know, there's concern of visitor safety or traffic flow, again, the parties could entertain hiring an independent traffic consultant to undertake a review. Either way, each party retains sole authority and control over their portion of the alignments. So any changes, drop-off, pickup points is up to the respective party. Also, we're going to establish a VTS feedback committee. It'll be comprised of two reps each from Fallsview, the Clifton Hill, Victoria Center, and Lundys Lane BIAs, the city and the Niagara Parks Commission. And it's an opportunity for stakeholders to provide input, sharing issues or concerns, any ideas on how we can improve the system, and so we want to have that feedback. And through the ITS technology on the red and blue lines, we can provide the industry with some good reports, and we want to do that as well. Final decisions, however, on red and blue lines will stay with this council and green line with the Niagara Parks Commission. It's anticipated the committee will meet several times through the year, and NPC rep will chair the committee. The last slide just provides council an overview of how the $50 million has been allocated. And quickly, just, there's rolling stock, of course, as we've talked about, the ITS technology, ticket kiosks, there'll also be a branding platform that's created, again, working with the BIAs, the Parks Commission, and the city staff. There'll be costs for an operations, maintenance, and storage facility, as identified, and there also, through the process, it was identified that there could be some pinch points along the alignments on the red and blue points. We've gotten about $2 million to deal with those intersection improvements and a possible lane expansion. In addition, there's $5.8 million going to the alignment of River Road in the park. And so that, and there's a portion of the HST that we do not get rebated back on, so we've identified a number for HST as well, and that gives us the $50 million. Now, there could be some slight fluctuations in that, and we have a little bit of ability to maneuver, but that's pretty much what we're set. Again, our next steps, hopefully, if this is approved, we want to get it, signing the contribution agreements with the province and the feds. We're hoping to do that by the end of this month. This will allow us to immediately begin implementing the system. We have to have this project substantially completed by March 31st, 2013, and so time is of the essence as we move the project forward. Thank you, Worship.
Okay, thank you very much, Serge. First up, Councilor Thompson.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. It's amazing how quickly things move along when you're trying to accomplish something. First started in 1979, 1980, and here we are today, dealing with such an important issue. I'd just like to give a little bit of history and background, just to let everybody know the effort and the time by staff, by government officials, by all kinds of people who put their heart and soul and effort into this project. And 1979 and '80, I think most people recall, this is the time when we had one of the most severe recessions at the time. And this was not only to improve the experience of the visitor and also get them out of their cars, but one of the prime factors at that time was to create jobs. That's exactly what we were doing, and here we find ourselves in the same situation today. There have been a couple of emails and pictures, or comments made about, you know, this should be done differently, it should be a different alignment, this should be a different concept. First of all, this started out as a monorail system. Hundreds of thousands of dollars spent by provincial, federal governments, by the casino fund that was agreed to, to try to make this happen and pull it all together. This has been studied to death, and what we have today is nothing like all of the studies suggested. Here we have a monorail initially, then a fixed rail, a 10-kilometer loop system through the park and through all of the major attractions. However, this concept here today is a rubber tire because $50 million makes that work, and it's also something that has been voted on by the stakeholders and supported by the stakeholders. This is not something that a consultant has submitted, and everybody said, "Oh, isn't this wonderful?" This is something that has come out of the BIAs, who know the need and where they want the people to be picked up and where they want these rubber tire systems to go. So I think that is extremely important. If somebody has some suggestion about an alternate system, we've had lots of them, but this is what the stakeholders want. This is the routes that they want them to take, and I think that this is an important aspect of what we're dealing with tonight. $50 million. I've heard some people say, "$50 million's a lot of money. Should we be doing this?" Well, I can tell you, a lot of time and effort was put in to get $50 million, and I tell you, if we have any problem with spending that on rubber tire system to serve really the lifeblood of this community, which is tourism at this particular point, then I tell you, it'll go some, to some other municipality. It won't be cutting off the deficit, it won't be cutting back on government spending, it'll go to some other municipality, and I think that that's extremely important to realize. If we trip and fall and don't take this forward, other people will have very good use for this money. Certainly, one aspect of it was the service of the downtown, the rail station, the bus station. The Parks Commission initially, were suggested that they would do that. There was some concern from the downtown, what's going to happen? The Parks Commission did not want to do that. The city, in their resolution and motion, has already determined that the city will take on that responsibility, and why would we not want to service the bus station? Why would we not want to service the rail station? The other thing is that this is phase one, because there's some people that say, "This isn't the right system." I'd be the first to stand up and say, "This is not what we started off with." But this is what is appropriate and what we can afford, and it doesn't affect the taxpayers in Niagara Falls at this particular time. So this is extremely important to get on as soon as we can to phase two. We acquired the rail line, took it out of the park for many reasons, not just for this. You wouldn't have a casino sitting there if the rail line was still there. You'd still have toxic chemicals, trains going through the heart of the tourist area. That's not happening, so we accomplished a good objective there. But phase two is to put the ultimate system in, hopefully, which will probably not happen in my lifetime, but 30 years is, you have trouble staying in office for this long to try to accomplish these objectives, I can tell you. But anyway, I think that the staff, over the years, have done an amazing job. Serge Filicetti, and John McDonald, and Ed Lustig, and some of the people who should be here tonight and be thanked and praised for all of their efforts, because they never gave up. They always had that in mind. There has been some suggestions and emails about the tendering system, and because of the technology is, was given to a U.S. firm. I want to say that I have talked with, I've been over, there's seven people involved in this system. They studied it, they had a definite system on how they weighted system, and how they determined the successful bidder on this particular situation. What we want is the best technology. If they're from the States, we're not protectionists over here, and what would it be like if we said, "No, we're not going to accept it because they're from the United States"? What if they did the reverse over there? And I've asked Serge Filicetti a question. Is this company from Canada, who bid on this, who weren't considered, were they, have they done work in the States?
Yeah, the firm did, does, has done work in the U.S.
Yep, and they have a Canadian, the successful bidder has a Canadian office over here, so. Anyway, I, everybody was hoping this will be a short meeting, I don't expect that, but I would, it'd be my pleasure to make the motion to approve the system and to join partnership with the Parks Commission to make this happen once and for all, and hopefully we can get this underway by next spring. That should be our objective, we should put the pressure on these people to make that happen, and hopefully this is the end of a long trail, which is hopefully going to have some success.
Thank you, Councilor Thompson, and also, we'd be remiss if we didn't mention our CIO, Mr. Todd. He's been very, very knee-deep in this as well. But you're right, a lot of people have been involved. Councilor Iadoni, then Councilor Carrio.
I'll second his motion and just ask the question for those that are watching from the downtown BIA, because there's been questions, are we legitimately going to put a people mover bus down Queen Street? I heard Mr. Filicetti stand up and mention Queen Street. Can we give them a guarantee as we're standing here tonight?
We'll ask our CIO to address that. Thank you.
Good morning, sir. The only thing I forgot to add, I'd like to have a recorded vote, please.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. If you can see from, I know it's perhaps not too clear, but maybe I can articulate. So what originally was to happen was that the Parks Commission was going to run their green route and loop up around downtown. That is not going to happen, so what we've negotiated with the Parks Commission is that you can see in yellow there, partially see in yellow, we will have the blue route, which would come down Clifton Hill, at the base of Clifton Hill, run along River Road, all the way to Queen Street, up Queen Street, all the way to Victoria Avenue, along Victoria Avenue to Great Wolf Lodge, come back from Great Wolf Lodge, and then back down through the downtown area to service the bus station, the Go station, and then back along River Road to the base of Clifton Hill. So that's the route that we will now operate as an extension to the blue route. We think it's an advantageous standpoint that we will run that on a more, on a more year-round basis. The Parks Commission's intention is to only run their green route seasonally, so our hope is that we'll be able to provide a greater level of service into the downtown area on a year-round basis.
Thank you.
Councilor Iadoni, you good with that? Okay, great. So that's a big yes for Queen Street. Yeah. Councilor Carrio?
Thank you, Worship. I'd like us to recognize our new partner, Chairman Janice, from the Recognize Our Partner, and I just would like to go on record saying, on behalf of some of my peers, we're all very thankful that yourself, Ken Todd, Serge, Janice, Fay Booker, and all the people had the commitment and perseverance to stick with this. No agreement's perfect. I know this was a tough battle between the city and the Parks Commission, and everybody really is worried about their own business, but on behalf of them and myself and the industry, thank everyone that was involved that did come to an agreement and were able to put everything aside, and for the betterment of the industry, I think we're going to have a great system. And thanks to Councilor Thompson's and some of the other people that were here before us, who had the thought to, before us, to stick with this till it's fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other, yeah, Councilor Gates, and then Councilor Maves?
Thanks very much, Mayor Deadey. First of all, I'd like to congratulate staff of the Parks Commission for, obviously, putting this together. It has not been easy, obviously, over the last little while, particular last little while, but I congratulate all the parties for doing it. I just have one concern, and it was raised by Councilor Thompson, on the Transit Intelligent Transportation System, the ITS. I did, I've been very consistent on this issue. I raised it downstairs a number of times during this process, but it was in camera, it wasn't in front of the camera, it was downstairs. So I think it's important that I raise this issue about the tendering process, and I don't like to read some of it, but I like, I think it's important for the city, for people that are here, and also the council, to hear what transpired, and then I'll give you what my feeling is on it. The Niagara Transit issued a request, an RFP, for Transit Intelligent Transportation System, and that was done under the document P26210, and it closed on May 17th, 2010. The proposal was for the GPS tracking, voice, and visual next-stop announcement system, and the next bus arrival information for passengers. Several firms, mostly Canadian ones, submitted responses, and this is from the company that I've been talking to out of Toronto, and one of those companies obviously bid. Their company does, already does this type of work, and with this technology. And I'm going to give you some of the locations that they're already doing it for municipalities right across the province of Ontario, and they also do work in the United States, and I'm going to, I'm going to say that clearly. The difference is that, I'll explain my position on that later. They already do the TTC, they're doing work for the TTC in Toronto, they're doing it for St. Catherine's, and I'll address St. Catherine's, Kingston, Sarnia, Timmins, Peterborough, Barry, Cornwall, Sioux St. Marie, Thunder Bay, Branford, Stratford, Woodstock, and then they mentioned they've done a number of others in the United States. So I don't think technology is the issue here. They're located in Toronto, and they're proud to be an Ontario-based team. They were shortlisted on the first RFP. They did get an interview. They then made a request for a second RFP, and that was called P53210. It was issued on August 19th, 2010, and several firms didn't agree with it, but it was what it was. And the second time, this Ontario company wasn't, wasn't shortlisted. Obviously, the company's trying to figure out what changed, and I think that's fair. I think that's a very fair request on their part. And they, on their notes, they've said that they were told that a company from the United States and one from Europe were the ones that were shortlisted. So I looked into it deeper, because I was being asked, "How can this happen here?" So the company that won the bid, or is the preferred bid, I think in talking to staff today, they said it's a preferred bid because it hasn't been approved, is from Clever Devices, from Paintsville, New York, the USA, and they never responded. Now, they're the ones that is a preferred one, but they didn't respond to the first, the first RFP. Having said that, I've given you a list of some of the things. Obviously, the Ontario company isn't happy when they lose, when they lose work, and what I, what I think's a little different than, or what my concern is, is that Niagara Falls, this council, Councilor Thompson, have been hoping to get this system up and running forever, it seems, and they've done a lot of good things to make it happen. But the reality was that it doesn't happen without $50 million of taxpayers' money, provincial and federally, and we're certainly appreciative of their partnership to make this happen, to help, help the tourism sector, quite frankly, that has been struggling for a number of reasons. Some of it has to do with the Canadian dollar, some of it has to do with, there's not a lot of other jobs out there, people don't have extra money to come to the Falls, but it's still taxpayers' money. And I believe that because we are using Canadian taxpayer dollars, that we should be supporting the Ontario firm and supporting Canadian. So I'm very disappointed, and I've had lots of conversations with staff, I thank staff for their answers and that, but I really believe that it's a lot different, and the Americans do have protectionism, without a doubt. They have the American Act, which on procurement is one of the things that they do, they do have some control over. In this particular case, they were shortlisted the first time, they didn't get it the second time. The company that didn't bid the first time, then it was awarded the bid. My issue isn't, "Do we need a people mover system?" I think, I think that's going to get full support tonight, I don't think that's the issue. The issue is, is how we're going to spend the dollars. And I really believe that if we're going to spend Canadian tax dollars, we should be doing it right here in Canada, right here in Ontario, and if they're going to say that they don't have the technology, because, you know, I've talked to some of the other staff today, and they said, "Well, they don't have the technology, we want the very best." But the TTC, although they have only a part of it, but the part that they do have, moves 4 million people a day, a day, and they're getting around quite fine in Toronto. So I really would think that we reconsider that position. I know it might only be my own position, but I believe that if, if we're going to do this and do it right, let's use Canadian tax dollars, Ontario tax dollars, my tax dollars, everybody around this room, supporting an Ontario firm, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. I'm going to ask our CIO if he would address your comments.
Well, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'll just, I'll try to be brief on the issue, but as Councilor Gates had indicated, there was a, an RFP issued last year, and that's something we should clarify for tonight as well. We had a report go to council last June, which had the RFP for the rolling stock, which the preferred vendor there is Nova Bus out of Quebec, and it had the RFP for the intelligent transportation system as well. But to put it in perspective, out of the $50 million that we're talking about here, the top four bidders for the project, in it was a German company, Clever Devices is the recommended firm, Strategic Mapping is the firm that Councilor Gates is talking about, and Nova Bus themselves had bid on this system as well. And the total bid for Clever Devices is about 2.1, a little over $2.1 million. So we're talking about $2.1 million out of the $50 million capital total. It just should be noted, though, that Clever Devices was not the low bid, in it was In it was, and they are, I believe, out of Germany. And the third highest bid, at $2.3 million, was Strategic Mapping, and that's the firm that Counselor Gates is talking about. In our RFP process, the actual price was about 15% of our total review. It was one of the factors, but not the only factor. And again, there's about $160,000 difference between the firm that we're recommending and Strategic Mapping, which is about $160,000 more expensive than the firm that we're recommending. And again, just to put it in perspective as well, the company that we're recommending, I think you recognize some of these names, they have the contract for the Chicago Transit Authority, New Jersey Transit, Washington Metropolitan Transit, Walt Disney World, Baltimore Transit, they do New York City Transit, they also do Montreal, and O.C. Transport, which is Ottawa. So they have quite an impressive list of clients as well, Mr. Mayor. And our staff had quite an extensive team together to review it. We understand that it's not a Canadian firm that's awarding it, but after going through the process, we certainly stand behind our recommendation to engage the firm that we've put forward here tonight.
Thank you. Are you good with that answer, Mr. Gates?
Fine, it's all the answer. I already talked to--
Okay, thank you. Counselor Maves?
Yeah, Your Worship, I'm very pleased to see this coming forward, and obviously, I'm going to support the motion, although I do have some concerns with the insurance. And I was just wondering, looking at the various contracts and issues in here, has this all been run by our insurers? Are they in tune with this?
Yes, actually, as of just late today, our insurers have matched the language, and perhaps Mr. Beeman--
Every insurance clause has been presented to Cowan. Our insurance broker and reviewed by their underwriting department. And certain modifications were requested, and all of those have been approved by the lawyer for the Parks Commission. So we've arrived in agreement on the insurance wardings, which are approved by our own insurance carriers.
Okay, now, the other thing I'm concerned about is the fact that these buses will be in our names, our name, but they're going to be leased, so the Parks Commission will be buying insurance on that. But the buses will still be in our ownership, correct?
The buses are going to be leased from us, yes. And to say they're in our name, I think is a little, there are certainly registered names. The registration will be in the city of Niagara Falls. However, the name on the buses will be VTS. This will be a separate line, with separate deciling and identification from the regular transit buses?
Yeah, I appreciate that, though. In the event of a lawsuit, though--
Yes.
Usually, the lawsuits go in the name of the owner of the bus.
Of the insurer.
As well as the lessie.
Yes.
Okay, lessie and lessor, so they're both named in the thing. And I'm just concerned that, and I know that some of these clauses in here are probably redundant, in that they hold harmless clauses. I'm sure if there's a large lawsuit, we'll all be dragged into it. And I'm concerned that $10 million isn't enough, especially when we're using buses we've never had before, articulators, which are double buses. And hope to God, one of those buses doesn't wind up in the gorge. But I think that should be, I know we have excess coverage, and also, I'm wondering if the Parks Commission has excess coverage beyond the $10 million. Because I don't think that's enough.
Well, all I can say is neither carrier of either insurer has recommended that we get higher coverage. Both our insurer and the insurer for the Parks Commission have not thought that higher coverage than $10 million is required for this risk.
So you're happy with that, with the $10 million?
I don't assess insurance coverages, the broker does, and the broker's happy.
Now, the other thing I'm concerned about, and as you well know, in AMO, I think they discussed this quite thoroughly, is the joint and several liability, in that I'm sure, as I mentioned before, that we will be named in the event of any large lawsuits. So we can't avoid that, I'm sure. And I'm looking at some of these clauses, and I think they're redundant as to what the intent is. But I know the intent is to hold each other harmless, but I think it's almost impossible when you have a lessor, lessie situation. But anyway, I think that should be looked into. I would certainly recommend that we buy higher coverage, or at least protect ourselves to make sure that both ourselves and the parks are well-covered. That's my only concern. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Beeman, will there be opportunity throughout the agreement, if insurance needs to be addressed over the 10-year period, will there be opportunities where that can be addressed?
Not on the face of the agreement, no. Certainly, the city has the opportunity to buy more insurance coverage if it so desires, and we certainly are looking at our overall insurance package. However, I have to point out that the professionals who are advising us and preparing this agreement did not advise us to seek higher coverage, nor did the professionals advising the Parks Commission advise them to seek higher coverage. So I believe that we've got our insurance advice, that the $10 million is adequate for this particular risk.
Okay, Counselor Maves?
Um--
Yep? Counselor Morocco?
Your Worship, I'm going to support the recommendation. I think it's about time that we've got a transit system that's going to work with everyone jointly together. So it's nice, it's going to connect everyone through the city, it's going to connect the tourism and the residents. I think it's about time that we have this, and the sooner the better. As we heard at AMO when we were speaking to some of the ministers that we met with, our transportation system is key for the destination to move on and be successful. And I think with the convention center and everything else that we're looking forward to coming and work, this will be a great opportunity also to work with the GO train, hopefully to enhance that as well and move people around the destination. So I will support this recommendation. Thank you.
If there are no other comments, oh, Counselor Wayne?
Just a couple of notes. It's very nice to, after 30 years of work, see this finally being about to happen. I do sympathize with Counselor Gates, but as he noted, the U.S. has protections policies, Canada doesn't. And, you know, it's really an issue, we need to take up a game with the federal government to match what other countries are doing. My only other question would be regarding the red line, its seasonal route. And I'm just wondering about flexibility in adjusting the seasonality of it and extending the--
Sure. Maybe Serge would mind addressing that?
Yeah, it's seasonal in the sense that during the summer month, we're looking to have, you know, 15 to 20-minute headways through the system. And then in the winter periods, weekend service, and so, yeah, that's when it becomes seasonal, and even the headways will change. But again, we have a VTS feedback committee, the BIs will be part of it, and those are some of the discussion we'll have with the industry.
Okay, good, because I was concerned about the New Year's Eve demand and being able to get people to and from Lundy's Lane. So as long as we're able to address needs that arise, then I'm satisfied, and I'll be happy to support the motion.
Okay, great. All right, well, if there are no further comments, we'll call the motion recorded. We'll ask our clerk to record the motion.
Your Worship, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Iannone, the recommendation in your report, which is that council approve the agreement between the city and the Niagara Parks Commission related to the operation of the Visitor Transportation System, VTS, for a 10-year period. Counselor Wayne?
In favor.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Iannone?
Yes.
Counselor Morocco?
Yes.
Counselor Maves?
Yes.
Counselor Kerrio?
Yes.
Counselor Gates?
Yes.
Counselor Pierangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Deodati?
In favor.
It's carried unanimously.
Okay, our CAO would like to make a clarification.
I just want to make sure that we, now that we've approved the agreement, the Parks Commission will be signing it, we hope, Janice, within the next day or so.
Ten minutes.
What we then hope, ten minutes, what we hope then is, we had prior approval back last June, I believe it was, so we just want to make it very clear, we are now going to be proceeding with those procurement issues, with the bus order, with the ITS order. So now that these agreements are in place, we had prior approval last year, but we had to hold off on the orders, obviously, until we got this approval tonight. So we just wanted to make it very clear to council that we are going to be proceeding on that previous counsel recommendation to move forward on those orders.
Mr. Beeman?
Just to follow further, another item, counsel, just so long ago now that we might have lost order. Councils also approved our executing the contribution agreements, such as required for the financial donations, that's just one of the list of things that we just want to remind. We'll be going forward with those as well. These are agreements with the province and federal governments, which basically commits council to spend the money on the project that's been described to you. So they want to make, to obligate us to administer the money correctly and apply it to the project and not run off to Miami with the proceeds. That's the basic function of those agreements. They also set a certain goals, which we have to meet in terms of the expectation of, for example, building the bus facility will have to be, you know, completed by a certain date and so on. And they'll be checking up on us periodically to make sure we're administering the project in a business-like manner. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. So that has concluded. Moving forward to announcements and remarks, first off, I regret to announce that our thoughts go to the family of Max Keel. He's a retired volunteer firefighter at the Willoughby Station. Max passed away in August 22. As well to the family of Tony Morocco, a longtime City of Niagara Falls employee. Our thoughts and our prayers go to your family at this time. In addition, on behalf of the City of Niagara Falls, we offer our condolences, as we're all saddened upon hearing of the news of the death of former NDP leader Jack Layton earlier this week. As a reminder to residents, we've placed a condolence book in the front lobby of City Hall, and it's available for the public to sign it with their best wishes. This book will be there until next Friday, and then the book will be forwarded on to Mr. Layton's family. And we'd like to thank Counselor Iannone for a quick action on putting this idea of having the book ready for all residents to sign. In other news, at AMO Association of Municipalities of Ontario, I was joined by Counselor Gates and Counselor Morocco and our CAO Kent Todd, and pleased to say that we had some very positive meetings with ministers as we were there. We got to hear addresses from the leaders of the three provincial parties as we lead up to the election coming October 6. And I'm sure there's going to be a lot more exciting news coming, but we did have some fruitful discussions on some issues that are key and specific to the City of Niagara Falls. Upcoming special anniversary, it's the 10th anniversary of 9/11, coming up this September 11. And we've been approached by a multi-faith group in the community to put an event together, a nonreligious event. The event's going to be called Imagine. The event, thanks to the graciousness of our Scotiabank Convention Center, rather, it'll be a community center that night, Sunday, September 11, from 7:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. for one hour at the Scotiabank Convention Center. We'll have an event of hope, an event of optimism. We're inviting all members of the community to join us as we celebrate the 10th anniversary. It will be a free event, and we appreciate as much participation as possible. And lastly, the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast is coming up on Thursday, September 29. That'll be held at Club Italia with a 6:30 a.m. commencement and a 7 o'clock beginning of the actual event. Tickets are available by contacting Cathy in the Mayor's Office. Next up, I would ask our city clerk if there are any additional bylaws or amendments to be noted.
No, Your Worship?
All right. Yes, Counselor Iannone? We're not there yet. We're going to pass the bylaws first. Yep, Counselor Pierangelo, seconded by Counselor Kerrio, for a motion to read the bylaws for a first time. All those in favor?
Bylaws 2011-110 to 2011-114, we're at a first time.
And for a second and third time, I look for a motion from Counselor Pierangelo, seconded by Counselor Morocco. All those in favor?
Bylaws 2011-110 to 2011-114, we're at a second and third time and passed.
Okay, new business. Counselor Iannone, then Morocco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended on your behalf last night the Ontario Health Association's meeting in Chippewa, which is going to be rescheduled. But what I did learn last night was Counselor Gates told the group of people there that he had the opportunity to ask Deb Matthews a question at AMO, and it was, not only not why she didn't meet with us, but will the report, the supervisor's investigator's report be done before the election? And absolutely not, it's not going to. That makes me a little nervous, because it seems to me that whatever party gets in has a four-year mandate. And, you know, they don't move really quickly in their first couple of years of their mandate, generally not to an election year, as we've just seen. So what I wanted, so the question I asked last night was, now that we've opened the door for a supervisor, the ombudsman now has an opportunity to get involved. I learned last night, the ombudsman gets involved at a request. So I would like to make a motion that this council send a request to the ombudsman to come in and piggyback on the investigator to look into the actions of the NHS.
Okay, moved by Counselor Iannone, seconded by Counselor Thompson.
Yes, I'd just like to add a couple of comments to that. I think we were all pleased when we heard a couple of weeks ago that there was a supervisor that had been appointed by the province. I think that was a step in the right direction, but I think the suggestion being made, and also, I don't want to get involved in provincial politics, but the gentleman running from the Ford Erie area suggested that an investigator or supervisor was fine, but what we need is a full investigation on what has happened over the past 10 years with respect to the NHS. And we've had our battles and fights in here on a regular basis. So supervisor, they could appoint Dr. Kits. Wouldn't that be interesting? He came in and approved the health improvement plan that we all had a problem with. So I think that we'll wait to see what happens with the supervisor, but there's no question that it has to come out, why did they close Ford Erie? Why did they close Port Colbert? Why are they taking the appropriate services away from GNGH? We should have those answers, let alone how we ended up with a super hospital in St. Catherine's in an isolated area. I think this is a great motion, and if the ombudsman will take on that responsibility, I think that's great also. So I'm happy to second the motion.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Iannone, to that point?
Well, we also learned last night was, there's been a precedent recently set in regards to a supervisor going in, deleting a hospital board, and changing the improvement plans that that board had approved. So it is not beyond hope to think that we cannot save maternity and child and gynecology here. I have no doubt in my mind, if you scream long enough, they want to shut you up, here's our supervisor. But bring Andre Martin in and have him take-- and he hasn't been pro anybody. Everything he's gone in to look at has had huge sweeping changes. Well, we need huge sweeping changes, and maybe, you know, in 10 years, we'll have mothers thanking us who can still have their babies here.
Well, especially, Counselor, when we addressed to them, you know, the demographic population growth forecast in the year 2031, put out by the region, and as you know, they were completely unaware of them, and it shows Niagara Falls, by and large, the fastest-growing area population-wise. And, you know, Gretzky's father used to tell them, you know, go to where the puck is going to be, not to where the puck is. And here's a classic example. They didn't even look, they didn't even know there was a game going on, never mind where the puck was. And it's maddening when we ask them, we say, you know, look at growth rates of maternal-child, look at the birthing rates. The highest increase is here in Niagara Falls, and the biggest decrease is St. Catherine's. So why would you put birthing where it's decreasing? It makes no sense. And they use the word common, our best practices, when it works for them. Well, in this case, absolutely not best practices.
Counselor Iannone?
And to that point, I always believe, what's the saying, crop flows up? The LIN is not involved in this supervisor report at all. The LIN directed the NHS, who directed the hospital. In the end, you've got an unelected board sitting at the LIN, who is controlling our healthcare, which is deteriorating sadly under the guidance that the province has given this LIN. So it's a slowdown system. Perhaps the ombudsman will see, I'm believing the line's going to go up right up to the LIN, and perhaps we'll have more change than just at the NHS, because the LIN cannot continue as it is.
Well, and to this, counsel, good work. You didn't let go, just like the people mover system, you didn't let go. And if you hang on long enough, you just have to outlast those that you're working with. So good work to everyone here. So we have a motion here by Counselor Iannone, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Counselor Morocco?
Yes, Mayor Deodati. Actually, from attending AMO, we found that we have the opportunity, as elected officials, to bid on the next conference year that they're looking at, which would be 2014 and 15. So I'd asked the council to support a resolution, sending a letter to AMO, to the attention of Nancy Plumridge, and asked that we invite their committee to come down and view our new convention center, which is now built. I know they were here before, and it wasn't built at the time, and unfortunately, we lost two years in a row to Ottawa, so let's maybe see if we can actually get those two years back and hopefully--
actually get those two years back and hopefully bid on '14 and '15, so we could have a resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Counsel Morocco, seconded by Counsel Ryanone, that we bid to have AMO Conference here for the 14, 2014, 2015, 2,500 delegates. It's a very positive way to put a lot of cash into the community. And it was the first time ever held in London. Any comments to the motion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. That's great. Are there any other new business? Counsel Thompson? Motion for adjournment, seconded by Counsel Ryanone, all those in favor? And lastly, I just do want to mention, there is going to be a press release announced on the VTS agreement, and myself and Janice Thompson, we're going to issue that and send that out. So thank you, everybody.[1786.13]